Nothing? No? Yeah. I think, I think what we'll do is we'll go into roll call and yeah, that probably makes sense. Before I get into, before I get into clarification of items on the consent calendar, I'll just kick it over to you. We do. Yes, we do. We might have a long one, too. It's interesting. All right. All right. Go ahead, Leilani. All right. Welcome back to the Newport Beach City Council meeting of November 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Heardman is absent.
All right. Before we go into current business, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. Just note, we're going to remove item 4A, the conference with legal counsel. That's scheduled for closed session from the agenda.
All right. And then I'll say this again before, you know, right before we recess, but this is study session and then our regular meeting will start at 6 o'clock. All right. So we'll move first into study session, item number one, clarification of items on the consent calendar. I'll go just left from left to right, my left. Ms. Dixon?
No, I do not.
Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Okay. Mr. Duffield, Mr. Avery? And I have none. All right, we'll move into items, item number two, status of the general plan update. We'll start with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill and City Councilmembers. I am Simone Jurgis, your community development director, and with me on my left is Jim Campbell, who is the deputy director for community development. This is a status update that Councilmember Brenner has asked for, and we're happy to present this and tell you where we're at with the general plan update. So if everybody recalls back in, really it started in 2018 when we talked about doing a general plan update, and it wasn't until January 2019 that the city council formed the general plan update steering committee. And the whole purpose of that committee was really a listen and learn, to listen to the community, to learn about what the issues are with the community. They've held 13, they did a lot of work. They held 13 listen and learn engagement meetings. We had an actual workshop at each of your council member districts, and so there was a lot of good interactivity. And if you remember, recall, we had kind of a Lego set identifying where housing units can go throughout the city. At that time, we anticipated that the arena numbers would be about 2,700 units. And later throughout 2019, SCAG put out their number of 4,834, actually it was 32 arena units, and eventually was updated by an additional two. So from that, the steering committee kind of pushed the, the housing issue back to the city council. And so in November 20, 2019, the council, city council asked us to put together a housing action plan. And it was really a three-pronged approach. It was a legislative solution, a political solution, and a work towards compliance. And you could see on the right-hand side, you know, what we've, and this is just a sampling of what we've done with regards to the legislative solution. We've actually drafted an assembly bill, AB 1063, that did not see the light of day, and it got stuck at the, at the Senate Housing Committee up at the state level. We recently filed a, our appeal of our housing units. We've also filed an appeal against the city of Santa Ana's housing units. With regards to the political solution, we focused a lot of attention talking to our local legislators, talking to other city council members who are kind of going through this, the same experience with this unheard of high housing units. And we've garnered a lot of support, and we've talked to HCD. So there's a lot of work being done at the political level. At the same time, we're working towards compliance, and that is our Housing Element Advisory Committee. So that, in 2019, you gave us the charge of creating the housing action plan, and we've satisfied that action plan. Now, we're going to fast forward just a little bit, and this was really the pivotal moment in January 2020. This is this year, pre-COVID, where we pivoted and focused solely on housing compliance. Again, a reminder, 4,800, planning for 4,800 units, that is a large, large number. It's the largest number in the history of the city of Newport Beach. That is four decades worth of development, kind of, kind of getting shoved into the next eight years. That, in January 2020, the city council adopted a resolution, number six there. And what that did, it really paused the general plan update process, and it dissolved the steering committee. It formed the Housing Element Advisory Committee, and there's 10 members, and Mayor O'Neill is our ex officio member there. They've been doing a lot of work on this housing element, and we've directed all the city resources towards solely focusing on the housing element. When I say city resources, I'm talking about the staff that's involved. I'm talking about the money that's being poured into it. And when you have 10 members of the steering committee, you know, that's, they're volunteering their time. Out of the 10-member committee there, you know, we, they formed five subcommittees, and three of those subcommittees are focusing on housing location. One subcommittee is, is working on affordable housing, and another subcommittee is doing, is focusing on outreach. They're working hard. This is a major, major task for us, a major endeavor, to figure out where to put 4,800 housing units. So what does that look like going forward? What, where do we get to the general plan? So this is just a, kind of a schedule timeline. On the left-hand side is the present time, and on the right-hand side is our deadline of October 2021. And so we have about 11 months left to submit a housing element. Looking just at that, focusing on that top line, you have, we have some workshops there. I'm not going to get into the detail that I'll talk about a little bit later, but by March of 2021, we're going to have a draft housing element, and we're going to have to circulate that to the public, and so make sure that we get their public input. We're going to work with HCD and get HCD's input on our draft element, and at the same time, we've got to work on the EIR, and that, that's a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work in a very short amount of time, and we need to focus all of our attention on getting this housing element done by October 2021. At this, on a parallel approach, we're working on the circulation element, and, you know, we have our public work staff, our traffic engineering team, really focusing a lot of attention, and we're utilizing our planning commission as our public forum for that. So I'll talk about a lot of these workshops that we have going on, but I just wanted to kind of share with you that, you know, we have a lot of dates in front of us. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of public engagement that we see coming forward regarding the housing element and the circulation element. So what happens after?
Sorry. Just a sorry. Let's go back for just one slide.
Certainly.
Because it's probably worth noting a little bit more of where we, where we are right now in terms of kind of getting granular. So we've, the Housing Element Subcommittee, the Housing Element Subcommittee has been working through the HCD form. The HCD form is, it's very, it is very granular. It is to the point where when we are going to be submitting this into HCD, it's not enough to say that we plan on putting 1,000 units in, you know, in the airport area, and 1,000 units in this area, and 1,000 units in this other area. They actually require for every assessor's parcel, assessor's parcel number, all the way down to the APN, you have to fill it out for every APN that you plan on using for, for this. And the Housing Element Subcommittee has been working through this, and actually, I would encourage everyone, if they haven't had an opportunity to, to go back and actually watch the most recent Subcommittee meeting, specifically the discussion led on the, that actually, that, that discussion on APN, they went down and actually looked through every, every parcel to find a, a location for it, for it. They've, how many, how many did they highlight on that, Simone? Quite a few, I just can't remember how many.
Almost 200, at least 200 sites.
Yeah. So they're working through at that granular level, at the Subcommittee level. So I would just encourage folks, if they haven't had an opportunity to go back and look at it, that, at least that portion of the Subcommittee meeting, I would encourage you to go look at it, because that's, that's ultimately where we have to get to for the discussion about HCD, and it's, it's, it's going to be hard. So then that's not even taken into consideration yet. The Subcommittee that's meeting, the Subcommittee of the, of the Housing Subcommittee that's meeting to discuss the issues of the affordable housing and the complexities that go along with how to actually increase your, your housing stock on affordable, which, when that report comes, we'll have an opportunity to present at some point to the council to have an idea of where we, you know, what, what the options are. But I'm, I'm, I'm growing less and less sure that this is a possibility. I didn't think, I didn't think so at the beginning, but I'm sort of getting to that point where, but I'm, I'd like to at least make sure that I'm highlighting for everyone just how incredibly complicated this actually has turned out to be. We thought it would be, and it's turning out to be just as complicated, if not more so. So anyway, that's my encouragement, is to watch the last meeting at least on that particular item. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. And to add to that, you made a good point that finding the sites is the difficult part of this. And from a staff standpoint, we're tasked with getting this housing element done, and that's what we're focusing a lot of our attention. Continuing with kind of a schedule standpoint, again, you know, we're focusing on October 2021. You know, we, we don't have a lot of room from a staff resource standpoint to do much else besides focus on housing. We, we see that the, the next stage of this is really focusing on that land use element. The whole point of the housing element, these are policies of for affordable housing, for housing at all income ranges. At the same time, it identifies these opportunity sites. But the work's not done. Even if you get a housing element done, a developer can't build the project, because your, your general plan, your land use isn't updated. The housing element is just one piece of this. We will need to add policies to update our land use element, and that's going to be our next stage. And we hear a lot about that kind of master planning for the community, and that's where a lot of this will take place. People are talking about, you know, what about the vote of the electorate, Charter 423? When does that come into place? We believe that that comes to place when you update your land use element, because that is what's going to increase all that density on your zoning, on your general plan. That is where we believe that the land use element is really going to require the vote of the electorate, and that's a separate discussion that, you know, we can definitely have and come back later on. So we feel that by October 21, we could focus on the land use element and the safety element, and I'll talk about what those are. And then, once we get the land use element going, and there's going to be a lot of community input, everybody has a lot of different thoughts of what that land use element should be. It's not just housing, but it's your commercial, your retail, your office. That's going to be a lot of discussion there. And we believe by, by, by 2022, we could start working on the other elements. And I just list three of them, and we have other elements, but you know, harbor, recreation, noise. This is all part of our general plan, and that's part of our general plan update. So we're looking at more of a phased approach, really from just a resource standpoint. You know, we just, we just need to be hyper-focused on our housing right now. Then we could focus on land use and then start tying in all our other elements.
So hang on just a second. Mr. Avery?
Simone, is, just in general sense, in your mind, how much of this would be single-family homes? I think just for people to understand where we're...
I think, I think the single-family homes is going to be a very small part of this.
Right.
It's, it's not going to be a big number. And again, it's, you know, we have, we're even focused, the Housing Committee hasn't focused attention on single-family.
Right.
They've been focusing all their attention on where we can get the best bang for the buck, which is your higher dense, medium to high density, 30 units per acre, 40 units per acre. You know, they haven't even gone to looking at anywhere on the peninsula or the islands or west Newport.
Sure.
It's just, there's no room. There's no room, unless, unless the council feels that we have to upzone these areas. And then when you upzone, you're going to lose your single-family neighborhoods. You know, single-family, you get torn down, you have duplexes. We just haven't even had that discussion. We just don't want to get there yet.
So it could possibly, a lot of it could look something similar to Uptown Newport kind of thing?
The Uptown Newport is a very clear model of what housing is going to look like in the future if this housing element gets certified, and once we update our land use element. Those medium-density podium-style projects are going to be the norm.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, to be fair, though, to the point being made, because of the way that the reporting is required on the APN level, even if we said, and just to be clear at home, we're not saying this, even if we said, you know, we're going to look at Bellbo Island, it's not like you could do an Uptown Newport project on the island.
Right.
I mean, you could, you could barely even do it, you know, you, at best, at most, you could take a parcel and say, well, you might add another unit. But, I mean, good luck getting to 4,800 that way.
Right.
Right? So, because how many people on the island are going to be actually doing that? That's, I mean, that's the problem with getting down into the APN granular level. I understand they want it for accountability, but okay, I guess, that's, that's, okay. All right, anyway. Go ahead.
So let's talk about the land use element. You know, we, we've heard a lot from the community about, you know, we, first, we need to master plan our communities. We need to plan our airport area before you put housing. And from a staff standpoint, we absolutely agree. You know, you want to have a plan first before you do anything. But right now, things have changed. We have an enormous amount of housing units we have to plan for. It is the tail wag in the dog. We have to focus on where these housing sites are going to be. As the mayor said, those APN numbers, what are those APN numbers? Once we identify that through our housing element, then we can pivot and focus on land use element and start doing that master planning. Housing is just one component of land use. You still have your retail component. We still have our, a robust office inventory here that we don't want to lose. We do have a need for light industrial. So all these areas of what we've talked about as far as, you know, how do we plan our future, we can do all this through our land use element, and these are policies that we add to the land use element, through land use, through zoning, if you want to bring in experts in. We can do all that, all through this. One caveat is, you know, it, if we, if we do any amendments to that land use more than the housing, we're going to have to do another EIR. Again, we have to comply with CEQA. We're going to do it for the housing element, and if we do anything more than housing in the land use element, if the council wants, or if the community wants more retail, we're going to have to do another EIR. So this is all cost and time, and that's why I bring this up. And the safety element, it's, it's becoming more and more important. It is now law. We have climate change, you know, we are experiencing all the wildland fires we have to address. We know FEMA has, has updated the flood, the flood maps. We, we know of the earthquake and locofaction areas, and we, you know, sea level rise is our biggest issue. And we, we feel from a staff standpoint, sea level rise is just as important as housing is. And, you know, that is, needs to get addressed. You know, we, we're updating our bulkheads or seawalls, but what are we going to do about the coast? You know, and that's really important for our property owners and for the city. So that needs to get fleshed out, too. We've got to do a vulnerability assessment, and that's going to be done through the safety element. That's why we have it scheduled for October 2021. And then what's important to understand is nothing is cheap. Everything costs money. So we, so far, we have about 2.3 million set aside to be working on those elements. I've talked about housing, circulation, land use. We've uncovered about 1.6 million, so we have about $600,000 left. If there is a desire to do a lot more work on that land use element, if we want more experts, urban planners, if we want, you know, designs and 3D renderings, you know, it's going to cost money. And so I just, I'm just putting it out there for the council's knowledge that, you know, if we're going to do a robust analysis on, throughout the land use element or throughout the remainder elements of the general plan, it's, it's just going to cost more money for us. Depending on what we do to the land use element, we may have to do another EIR, and that's another half a million dollars to do. So, you know, we anticipate the cost is, I don't know, somewhere between two and a half and three and a half million dollars, and, you know, and I don't want to keep coming back to council asking for more and more money. But I think the money in this, the cost of the EIR, the cost of the general plan update, you know, that, that's significant, that we need to make sure that the council is fully aware of this.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going back in my memory. When we were proceeding with the general plan update before all the RENA activity started, weren't we talking about a, a total project cost of approximately $4 million?
Actually, the project cost was two and a half million for doing everything at the same time and doing one EIR. We projected about two and a half million, and that's what we shared with the council in 2019.
I don't know where I got the 4 million. Was, another question. What it, in, in the world of, the universe of your colleagues in other cities and planning departments, how are they approaching this? I, I do hear that some cities are not doing anything. I think the city of Newport Beach should be commended, because we are doing the responsible compliance at a great cost, but what do you hear?
So everybody's clearly different. Not everybody can afford to hire consultants. There are some agencies that are doing the housing element update in-house, and they feel that they can tackle it in-house. They either have land to do it, or they're just going to add every single policy in the world to their housing element. We know Huntington Beach is, they've gotten the ESP2 funds and the LEAP grants of about half a million dollars. So their housing element cost is about a half a million dollars, so that's how they're going to handle that. City of Irvine has been working on their general plan for a long time, and now they're in pause because of RENA, and they're, they're suffering the same fate as we are. They're hiring, they're housing consultants, too. And some agencies don't update their general plan. My last agency I worked for, their, their land use element was from 2000, from 1996. They don't plan to update it. And, you know, some agencies do that, and how they get around it is that they just do specific plans everywhere. They just never touch their general plan. So every, every, every agency is different. This community, this council, we're much more proactive with our general plan, and so we're doing a lot of work in a very short amount of time.
Could you go back to the prior slide?
Certainly.
On the calendar? So, well, maybe it's the one before. Excuse me, on the, we'll keep going, on the timeline. Okay. So I like what you're putting here in the sense that once you wrap up the housing element, the circulation element is, is starting at the, you'll do a handoff and go right into the land use element, because as we will be talking, and I guess in this item now, there's certain demands on all of us to short-circuit the general plan process and be looking at certain parts of the city for certain new development land use, uses. And so just to get an understanding of the timing on the land use element, I'm glad that you will, it looks like you're going to start this a year from now, or maybe third, third quarter, early fourth quarter 2021. And then by the time it takes to get the committee organized and applicants for volunteers and that type of thing, it's going to take several months to get it up and running. So I commend you for doing that. So it looks like that's your intent, is also with the safety element, to get those started kind of in a relay fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And I want to say that I think we, we've gotten kind of wrapped up here. We talked about the funding sources, and then, going to make a harmless plug here, we do have two workshops coming up Monday and Tuesday. You know, we, we're looking for community engagement on the housing element. So November 16th, November 17th, 6:00 PM, it's a, it's a virtual Zoom interaction. This is where we're going to take public comments from the community, and we're looking, we, we need public comments. We need the, we're really pushing out a lot of social media, we're doing a lot of flyers. We really want to engage the community. These dates are very, very important for the city, for the residents. You know, we, we need to hear their voices. You know, our housing committee meetings are public, but we're not getting a big turnout out of these housing committee meetings. These are virtual workshops, you can do it from home. Please go ahead and register at NewportTogether.com. And we already have about 70 people have already registered for these two workshops, or hopefully we can break 100, we're hoping for. And I believe that's going to conclude our presentation. Thank you.
So before we get there, let's talk a little bit about what we're doing on a couple of other fronts. So we were talking about the general plan update process from the perspective of the Subcommittee, but I'd like you to talk a little bit about what we're doing on the legal front as well. Could you talk about the appeal?
Certainly. So we filed, the, the city council authorized staff to go ahead and draft an, an appeal to the RENA numbers. And the, the main crux of our appeal is, is really twofold. One, it is very constrained to be in Newport Beach. We're a coastal city, we're in the coastal zone, we're subject to a lot of regulations with regards to the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Act. Second, we have John Wayne Airport, and they have their own land use plan, and they have their height restrictions. So tho, those two are kind of our main crux. We have liquefaction areas, so it's difficult to put additional housing anywhere in Newport Beach. And, and it, and that's the struggle that we have with Newport. And state law grants us zero flexibility. It grants us no waivers of any of this. It just says you shall plan for 4,800 units. The second crux of our arena appeal is that COVID has hit. You know, we need more time to, to engage with our constituents. We need more time to plan for our cities. And that, that's the major, that's the other part of this, is that there, there's so much to do in such a little time that, you know, you almost lose that connection with the community so you can plan your own destiny. So that is one route that we're going. City of Santa Ana has, has, has planned for and entitled a lot of housing units, and...
Can you say how many? Because it's huge.
So they're, they've planned for at least, I mean, this is entitled projects for at least 10,000 units, right? And their RENA is 3,000, right? So there, there's a gap of at least, at least 7,000 units for, for the city of Irvine. If it wasn't for that, their, their, their natural RENA would be probably 20,000 units. They only got 3,000 because they're a disadvantaged community, that state law allows that, and so we recognize that. We don't want to, you know, hurt city of Santa Ana. But city of Santa Ana is entitled 10,000 units. So let their RENA not be the 20,000 plus thousand, but just let it be the 10,000 units. So if they can absorb another 7,000 units, that will reduce our RENA by at least 200 units, if not more. So that's really important to us. So we have definitely challenged our RENA, city of Santa Ana's RENA, and so that's very important. The, the next item is, and Mayor O'Neill signed a letter to, for SCAG, is they're going to form a litigation committee. You know, Southern California region has been allocated 1.3 million housing units. So the question's being asked is where did that number come from? You know, 1.3 million units is a lot of units, and when you compare it to what the feds have looked at as what is the housing needs of California in its nature, that's 800,000 units just for the entire state, where, where HCD said for Southern California, it's 1.3 million units. So there's a complete disparity between what the state's doing and what the federal government's looking. So we've asked SCAG to form a litigation committee to look at this difference, and is there an opportunity to file litigation? And I think that's something that I think all cities and council members are going to be asking the question about. What do we do? How do you justify 1.3 million housing units? And the state can't. I don't think they can. They haven't done it so far.
So on that point, let me just briefly jump in. The SCAG representative on this issue is, is a council member up in Yorgalinda named Peggy Wong. Peggy had invited a, a letter from our city directly to them to not just, not, not only request litigation committee, but also ask us to request legislation at SCAG's request through, to, to the legislature. So it's two components. One was legis, the litigation Subcommittee. I think they've formed it. I think, I believe they've formed it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
So that's, that's positive news that, you know, the city of Newport Beach is, I wouldn't say we're leading on, but we certainly are helping the cause on that one. The other, the other aspect of this is the idea that, the, the example being used is that of Banning Ranch. So Banning Ranch is approved by the, by, the city goes through review at the Coastal Commission, and it's denied. And the question is, if something like that were to happen again, would those units count toward Newport Beach's RENA number, or would they not? And so Councilmember Wong asked to, his, his believes that if a city like ours were to have something like that denied by another state agency, that it should count, and has asked SCAG to advance legislation to that effect. So, so at her request, I, we submitted in a letter asking for that legislation to be advanced by SCAG. No, no, no update on that at all, but I wanted to at least provide that information, because we, we had said at the very beginning of this that we were going to be going down those three paths, and I wanted to make sure I was updating council on how we're going down those other two paths right now. So we're continuing to push back legally, we're continuing to push back legislatively, and we're trying really hard at the Subcommittee level to find a path forward, awfully difficult, as you're hearing right now. And then I know we're talking about the other, the other elements as well, so I didn't, obviously, I don't think that we should be ignoring any of these. We're just, we're right now being put in a really tight spot by, by, by some legislation. Anyway, so I, I wanted to at least highlight, though, on the housing element, where, a Anyway, so I wanted to at least highlight though on the housing element, where a little bit more on where we were on those other two paths. I appreciate the update on where we were on the third path. Yeah, Ms. Dixon, then Ms. Brenner.
Oh, go ahead if she pushed the button.
Okay.
Well, just a quick question. Was this an executive order or was this legislation and SCAG and their authority? I mean, with the recent Superior Court action decision questioning the authority of the governor, I don't know if it applies, but it just seems that now there's suddenly some avenues to question executive orders and these mandates and it's not really enabled through legislation.
So, you know, I don't believe it was an executive order from the governor for these housing units. It was, it does come down from HCD. And how HCD came with that number, that's kind of the unknown. We don't, we don't know how they justified that number.
Yeah, this, this one was legislation followed by legislation followed by administrative agency policy and was not, was not at the behest of an executive order. Yeah, I understood exactly where you were going with that. Ms. Brenner.
Simone, we've approved, what, close to 1,000 units in our recent actions so that our number should be reduced by a significant amount.
I'm going to have deputy director answer that question.
Ms. Brenner, yes, we have approved two projects most recently and one is under review right now coming forward to the council. If you total all that up, it is probably a little over, if we count all three of them, it'll be over 1,000 units. In two cases, they'll have some affordable housing component, even in the third project has an affordable housing component. So we'll be able to take those projects because they won't be occupied before June 30th of this upcoming year. We'll be able to include those in our RENA. So that is some progress towards attaining some of those goals.
So that's a little bit of progress. And then if we succeed on any of our lawsuits, we could hopefully reduce it by a little bit more. The thing that I'm concerned about is the Housing Element Committee is doing a great job. And boy, Larry has them on task and they are really, you know, getting the numbers down and the properties, the specific properties. But I'm concerned that we're not looking at our potential ADUs or even subdivisions. Like we approved a subdivision on Santiago a couple of meetings ago. And I'm just wondering if we were able to ascertain out there in the community where there might be, I mean, maybe there's 1,000 more units that we could use that would lower our number even more. So, and it doesn't seem like we have anybody really looking at that right now.
You know, we haven't focused on those subdivisions. Again, it's really the site inventory that the housing committee has been focusing on, the best bang for the buck, I guess you would say. You know, where can you put the most density? With regards to the subject of ADUs, we know we could get some credit for ADUs. It's in their guidelines with regards to this housing element. The question mark is how much credit can we get for ADUs? We, what we've heard is if the city plans to take an enormous amount of credit, then there's going to be performance benchmarks set by HCD. So hypothetically, if we want to take credit for 1,000 units, they're like, okay, well, you better measure that and you better track it. And if you can't, if you're not hitting your target of say 120 ADUs a year, then you're going to have to make that, those RENA number units up somewhere else. So that's kind of the unknown. HCD has said, sure, you can use ADUs, but you know, propose a program. So we're working on that program. That's what our consultants are doing. We just, we need to exhaust that site inventory first and make sure that we've covered everything as far as sites go for this higher density before we get to that, that ADU level.
I mean, we're, we're going to be pushed to approve big, high-density projects that I just am concerned that we don't find more than we absolutely have to because we haven't looked at these other areas where we could decrease our numbers. So that's one of the things that I was concerned about. And there's also a study that shows that the California population is decreasing and that people are actually leaving California. Are we including that in our, in our argument?
I think that's a very good point that you've just made is that the population that we've noticed is, has decreased. You know, it's, again, we have a draft RENA number of 4,800. You know, we didn't put the population decline in our RENA appeal, but I think that's a good point that you're making.
There are legitimate studies that are showing that. So, and I guess you said, you know, we need voices. So I'm very concerned that we're going to get to the point where we have a plan and the community is just not on board with it. And I've been to, I think, three or four of our, of our outreach meetings and I've watched the housing committee meetings on television. And, you know, I'm paying a lot of attention to that, but I don't feel like we're getting the buy-in from the community that we really need to get. And that's where I was concerned about us dissolving the steering committee was that it seemed like that was kind of their focus was really involved. And in the past, when we've done a general plan update, we've had a lot of community participation in those. And it seems like that's how you get to the point where people are going to be okay with something like this, is if they really get to participate. I don't want to be critical of those outreach meetings because I think the consultants and everybody's trying as hard as they can, but there's not much interaction. I mean, there's PollMe, which I love PollMe, and I've told Grace I'd love to be able to use PollMe for event activities that we have up here where people could, we could submit a poll question out to the community and have them, people buy in. But, but the questions are very structured. There's not, there's not, and COVID is very limiting because you can't just get people together to brainstorm and talk. But what I'd like to see is our community getting excited about some of these redevelopment areas. And I think that that could happen, for instance, in West Newport. You know, that could be a really exciting area where people are always talking about how wonderful Corona Mar is, that you can walk to everything. Well, if you develop something like that in West Newport, you could have people excited about living in those condos or Newport Crest or whatever because they could walk to that. And I just don't think we're getting the excitement. We're focused on pushback because we don't like being told what to do. But, but at the same time, it feels like we're missing an opportunity to get the community excited about some things that maybe they will like and maybe we will be able to do in the future and actually have happen. So I'm just concerned about that. But I also am concerned about the community complaining about the master plan and that there's, you know, when we approve a project, they always say we're doing it piecemeal. And I don't think we are, but we don't have something to show them that say, well, this is where the retail is going to go. And I know we don't have staff to do the general plan update steering committee right now, but it does seem like that we could have a community group that would be continuing to meet and talk about these things. And then if they had something that they really wanted us to focus on, they could, and I mentioned to Grace, even if it were something like the Corona Mar bid, we have just Melanie that comes. It's not a big staff commitment, but we have Melanie that comes to those meetings and she keeps us on, on target and she answers questions about what's legal with the city and what's not. And there's a lot of brainstorming that goes on at those meetings. So I feel like we're missing an opportunity there. And I know Susan DeSantis, who is on our Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, has done a lot of work as far as visioning goes and the technology available to do plans like that. And I was hoping that, I don't know if she's here, but that she would be able to tell us a little bit about that because Larry is focused on locating sites. And he has said to her in those meetings that she needs to bring that to city council and have us be the ones that determine whether that's something we should do moving forward.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Simone, yeah, let's take an area like West Newport. It's all private property, right?
That's correct.
And small, relatively small parcels.
Right.
And, and so we do a, you know, we change the zoning, but the way, we're not going to get everybody to hop at the same time. So the way we're going to do it, right, is going to, we have to, it's got to be set up in a certain way that will encourage development. There's no other way to do it. We're not going to eminent domain land and try to.
Right. It's all, it's all controlled by the private markets.
Right.
You know, and you make a good point, Councilmember Avery, is that, you know, we, we need the property owners to have a stake in this and they have to have a say in this too. And that's really important.
Yeah. And so I think for a lot of, a lot of people, myself included, it's depressing to think about this, adding this many units in Newport when we've all been concerned about growth. We've all been concerned about circulation, traffic, and what it means to our neighborhoods and the beach and the peninsula in summer. The, what's going on in the Great Park area is, you know, is an example, kind of, probably even a lower level example compared to what we've got to do in terms of, of scale and heights. But it's, it's difficult. But I think, I do think that's the first step is to, not the first step, it, an important step is to, it's got to be appealing enough for, for at least the property owners and developers to buy into. And it's got to work for the low income side of it. And that's going to be tough because that land is so valuable, right? So mathematically, it's, have we produced a model yet on a smaller scale that would work?
No, I mean, we're starting to see the projects that are coming forward. I mean, there are 5% affordable of the number of units inside a project because it's, because as you said, the land is so expensive, it's hard to make this pencil. So, you know, Mr. Campbell and I have been discussing it and Sherri Tucker had been discussing too. You may, sometimes you may, you may have to actually over-design and over-zone.
Right.
Just to make up those, that little difference, that gap.
And that's the last thing we want to do.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion before we go to public? Okay. We'll go to members of the public. We'll start in community room and go right ahead.
Hello, Nancy Gardner. When the animals in Animal Farm revolted, one of the things they wrote up on the board of the barn was all animals are created equal. And then sometime later, when they went in, they were surprised to see, oh, all animals are created equal, except some animals are created more equal than others. And this is what's happening with the, our general plan is that these two elements, and I'm not quarreling about they have to be done, but they are going to be more dominant. They're going to put us into certain corners. And I would hope that we could start to not review, not redevelop the new, these elements that we're not working on yet, but that we would have some group, whether we added to the, the current Housing Element Committee, a couple of people that would focus on this, or whether we ask SPON or some group, because they put so much time into, into the, the general plan preparation, that would look at things like the harbor element and the natural resources element and the recreation element and just say, wait, 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 here are some policies and, and while you're doing this, they should be considered. I think that would give a lot of people a greater sense of comfort as we go forward in this very difficult journey that we're on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Hoiye. I think there are just, this is really complicated. So many good points you guys made there. I want to start with Joyce's point, point that we should bring some excitement to the community. So, you know, I have been participating in this since day one, last year with the General Plan Update Committee. And the participation just went smaller and smaller in the community. And I partially think, this is not a blame because I fully understand the difficulty we have, the difficult decision the city made last year. But it just, housing element doesn't seem to be exciting enough, does not draw a variety of people. So I sent in a comment on Irvine's work. So it's interesting to hear from the community development director that Irvine actually started general plan update earlier than we did. But anyway, so they are working on multiple paths. Yesterday, after our water quality committee meeting, I zoomed into their environmental committee meeting. So they were talking about fire, urban forestry fire, and I was not sure where they were going. Turned out it was actually a safety element in the general plan update. And they were talking about using algorithms for trees. And the region comment I sent in there, there are three other, three things that committee forwarded to the city council tonight. That's transportation and the land use, buildings, energy. They got a lot of community engagement there. Honestly, I just have to tell myself, I think actually, I tell myself, maybe I'm biased, I say Newport actually has more passion, we can get it done better. But I, I just hope that we can figure out a way to go in multiple paths moving forward. I mean, you, this sea level rise, fires, climate change, these are real problem. Not getting the community excited to participate, this is a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the city council. I'm Susan DeSantis and it's my pleasure to serve on the Housing Element Update Committee. I would like to just make some observations. I'm not going to reiterate what council member Brenner has said or any of the other comments by the council members. There's good reason for the direction that the city is taking with its three-pronged approach and for the focus on the site inventory. And I can certainly empathize with the city staff on the level of effort that is going into just moving forward on the two elements that are underway at this time. So the challenge is, and I, I think there's been a tremendous amount of effort and diligence put into doing the site inventory by the committee, and there still is a tremendous amount of work left to, to do. The community will get a glimpse into it at these two workshops coming up. I think the challenge, which has been brought forward, for example, at the planning commission hearing last Thursday on the Piscern project, which is an excellent project and could serve potentially as a prototype for other development within the airport area, is that it appears to the community that things are being looked at on a site-by-site basis. And even at the upcoming workshops, the community is going to be asked to look at individual sites and be able to provide comments on them without having a broader vision or understanding of what the possibilities are within different opportunity areas. And so obviously there's a dilemma here because I don't know personally, and I've been engaged in this type of planning for many years now, I don't know how you generate support from within the community for the housing element without the vision for this number of units in this community. So what I wanted to suggest, and I don't know how it gets accomplished, but I see other communities in the state who are engaging in creative thinking about the future. And they're looking at new ways of doing things. And if there's a way to interject some of that now, I think it would be very important. It was mentioned at our housing committee meeting last week that there's an excellent example of the new Google campus that is being built in the city of San Jose that's going to, in partnership with the city, which is going to revitalize the downtown and encompass over 80 acres. And they're going to be focusing in on new ways of doing things. It's, it's not going to be a typical campus. And it's going to reflect the post-COVID environment. There are things happening in downtown Los Angeles, for example, where they are taking all the surface parking lots and they're covering them with parks and greenery and putting the parking underground. I had an opportunity earlier this week to interview the mayor of the city of Ontario, which is turning into a significant hub for freight through the Ontario airport. They are having conversations with Elon Musk about how to put underground tunnels that would move people from the Rancho Cucamonga Metrolink station, which is the last station on that line, to the airport. And also underground tunnels that would move freight from the. on that line, to the airport, and also underground tunnels that would move freight from the airplanes to the warehouse and distribution centers that are proliferating at the airport because of e-commerce. So there are things happening that are really different, really exciting, and would generate interest and participation by the community if they were part of this process. And so what I am proposing is that we figure out a way to make that happen. If I may have another minute.
Yeah, and also, you're part of the outreach team for the subcommittee, Housing Subcommittee, if I recall correctly, so go ahead.
So I did send over a couple of PowerPoint slides, and it was late in the day today, so I don't know if you've received it. But what the slides illustrate is an example of three, 3D modeling. You could take an area like the airport area, and you could create a three-dimensional model, and you would be able to look at densities, for example, and, and within different scenarios, you could create multiple scenarios, and you could be able to show what the output would be for different densities. This example, and I don't know if the video, it doesn't look like the video is part of this, is it? There was a YouTube video, if you.
Apparently not.
Okay. The video allowed you to walk through the community at a particular density level. You could have alt, you could have several alternatives that would help the community understand what it is we're talking about. If you put 1,000 units or 2,000 units in the airport area, what does that look like? What does it mean? What are the impacts? The city has developed a VMT calculator as part of its work on the, on the circulation element. You would be able to look at a scenario, for example, that had a certain density, let's say it were predominantly five-story buildings, such as the Pacern development that was approved by the Planning Commission. You could look at what that would be for building upon the site inventory that the Housing Element Update Committee has been working on. You could create the model based on the properties and the information that has been garnered through that effort, and based on realistic cost estimates, to be able to project what the housing output would be at different density levels. You'd be able to run the VMT calculator and be able to understand what the congestion impacts would be. You could be able to identify what the affordable housing output would be at different levels and what subsidies would be required to be able to create those units. So it is possible, with the newer technologies, to be able to create these models, to be able to bring the community in to help in the visioning process, and to allow them to participate in a way that they might get excited about and might see opportunities. Just one other example, and this came from talking with another member of the Housing Element Update Committee, who used to work for the Irvine Company, and he said when they developed the four-season, the plans for the four-season hotel, it included underground tunnels, which is, it's just interesting, because that was a long time ago. But there was a way of looking at what we have today a little differently. So in any event, that's what I wanted to say, that if there's a way to do it, I hope that we can make it happen now, because I think that's what it's going to take to get the community excited and engaged in this. And I'm not sure what you end up with at the end of having a realistic site inventory without bringing the community along and having a broader than the people that typically get involved, it needs to engage other community members as well. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments in the community room?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First, in response to some of the council questions, I thought it might be helpful to point out that the 1.34 million units that was assigned to the SCAG portion of Southern California is not entirely based on projections of population growth in California. If I recall correctly, about half of that assignment was deemed to be needed to relieve existing housing conditions, such as overcrowding, which I find unlikely to apply to Newport Beach, create higher vacancy rates, strangely, and a number of other parameters. Out of that 1.34 million, the 4,834 assigned to Newport Beach, it is very important, as others have pointed out, to realize that's just, it's not just 4,834 units, but those units are broken down by income category. A substantial number of those have to be affordable to low-income families, and a substantial number to very low-income families. The director was pointing out that the recently approved projects in the airport area allow only, or providing only 5% of the units would be affordable. He said affordable, it's actually affordable to very low-income units. And he said that would require some overbuilding to make up for the small gap, he said. It's not a small gap, it's an immense gap. If you're only building five units out of 100, you have to overbuild by 20 times. So if the requirement was 1,000 units of very low income, you have to plan to build 20,000 units. So the problem is immensely larger than it seems. As the other speakers have said, I agree that community interest in this is very important, community participation. For that to happen, I think first you and the city staff need to genuinely be interested in what the public has to say. Then you need to make the public feel and understand that you genuinely want to hear from them, and moreover, that you want to hear from them about something in which their opinion is actually going to affect the outcome in some way. I agree that our current website and our current publicity efforts are not generating excitement. These workshops, the virtual workshops, I don't think have been very representative of the public. It's good that we got 70 people signing up for something coming up in a week or, in next week, I guess, but that's 70 people out of 80,000, which is not a very good showing. In former times, when the general plan was updated in the early 2000s, I recall that all the residents received surveys in the mail, seems kind of low-tech, that did engage people somewhat. Perhaps a more modern hybrid of that is you can send out postcards at less cost, inviting them to do something, but what you're inviting them to do online has to really look exciting and inviting to them, like you really want to know what they have to say and what difference it's going to make. And there's nothing on our website that's doing that now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments in the community room? All right, any calls? All right. Go ahead and mute what you're listening to, and then go ahead.
Yes, my, David Tanner, and I had a few comments, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, on the item tonight. One, I'd ask that the City Council please clarify the general, the scope of the General Plan Update. We've heard from staff tonight that it's going to be piecemealed, taken in separate components, separate elements. I would note that piecemealing is prohibited by the California Environmental Quality Act, and I would also note that all elements of the general plan must be internally consistent, and that would be a finding that the City Council would have to make if it were to approve a housing element separate from the other elements that we know are going to be required to be amended. Secondly, given our current knowledge of housing opportunities within the city and current housing laws, I suggest the City Council meet and evaluate new strategies to comply with the state housing laws. I don't think the path we're on is going to yield success. Thirdly, it would be very helpful if the City Council instructed staff to describe the existing environmental setting upon general plan buildup prior to asking the public to provide comments. This would mean, what are the effects of the housing laws on the existing general plan? Will our infrastructure be overloaded? And it seems that staff's focus is totally on the 4,800 Rina number and not concentrating at all on the impact of accessory dwelling units, which dwarfs over time the impact of the Rina number. Fourthly, can the city meet, can, can we use the, excuse me, can the city meet the 2021 HCD deadline for the Housing Element Update? There are agendas going out, public comments, the city's website shows a schedule which indicates we can. I'd like an affirmative answer from what we know today, whether or not we can meet the deadline and provide an approved housing element, an effective housing element to HCD by the deadline in 2021. My fifth comment is, can we provide the option for the public to use the community room for in-person presentation to these workshops? Right now, they're going to be virtual, and my experience with virtual workshops is the availability for community interaction is severely limited by the operator of the Zoom presentation. And my last comment is that the city needs to be cautious about what we propose to HCD, because we have seen over the last few years that if we try to limit or work around what the state law is, that the next thing we see is that the state has passed a law to circumvent, to prevent that circumvention. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, last call in the community room? All right, we'll bring it back. Simone, any, anything you want to respond to during some of the public comments?
You know, we're working hard to get that community engagement. You know, we're putting a lot of resources into our social media outreach, especially for these two workshops on the 16th and 17th. Already, we have up to 70 registrants, and, you know, we think we're going to have over 100 on the 16th and 17th. I think that, that is a good turnout, even if you had in-person, which we can't do, you know, in-person large gatherings. You know, anytime we had 60, 70 people in, in our community room, that's a good turnout. So I, I, I'm optimistic. You know, I, I wanted to look at the council and tell the council that we're going to do everything we can in this day and age to make sure that the word gets out to the community, and that's what I've directed staff to do. So we're doing everything we can. I just can't do these big, large community forums in person right now. We have, we have COVID, and that's a serious thing. With regard to Mr. Tanner's comments, we understand the piecemealing aspects, we understand we have to be consistent with all the elements of the general plan, and we're working towards that, and we understand that. You know, our, our direction from the City Council was compliance, and we're doing that. That, that was the direction by the councils, to focus on getting the housing element done. We know the timeline is tight. We have directed the consultant to put those efforts to meet that timeline. I showed you earlier with a schedule that we'll have a draft by March, and we're sticking to that. We still have the EIR to do. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but, but we're focusing on doing that. And, you know, with regards to what we submit to HCD and, you know, how careful we need to be, I think, I, I think there's, there's going to be a lot of work ahead of us that the public can, can focus on. I mean, they, we have an outreach Subcommittee that is going to, you know, be part of that outreach process. That's why the Housing Committee formed that sub, that outreach Subcommittee. And, and Mr. Campbell here, and Ben Zadiba, and Jaime Mario, they, you know, they work with the Outreach Subcommittee on a regular basis to share their thoughts and ideas, and we get their input.
Who's, who's on that?
Mr. Campbell, on the outreach.
The Outreach Committee is Ms. Susan DeSantis and Debbie Stevens.
Okay, all right.
Hopefully, I answered those questions.
Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner, and then Ms. Dixon.
Simone, I just want to make sure you guys understand how much we appreciate everything you're doing, and we know that you are working, you know, 24/7, it seems like, to get all of this done, and nothing, I hope nothing comes across as criticism, because I don't see how our city staff can do any more than they already are doing. I think, you know, some of this maybe is just ways to refine a little bit, or, or way, different ways of looking at it, or something that could get us a better result. So one of the things that I'm thinking is our outreach meetings, and this has been since before I was ever on council or even thought of running for council, that I would go to city outreach meetings, and I would always be frustrated because they were so controlled. It's like, it's like there really wasn't an opportunity for people to just talk and, and exchange ideas, and, you know, brainstorming is the word that always comes to mind. Like, we've got such expertise in our community that we need to allow people the opportunity to just really talk about all these things, and because each of the, I've been to, I think, three or four of these, and they're very controlled, and I push the buttons and I answer the questions, but that doesn't give me any, even as a council member, that doesn't give me any satisfaction that I've been heard, or that my ideas were appreciated, or listened to, or bounced off other people, and I just, I just think that somehow we need to find ways to let people, and Debbie Stevens and Susan are great at this. So hopefully, they can help our city staff to figure out ways of doing this, so that we really do get people revved up about the possibilities and, and get them to talk to us, because we really don't want to talk to them as much as we want them to talk back to us.
And to that point, Councilmember Brenner, that, that is the point of our workshop on Monday and Tuesday. It is going to be that dialogue. People are going to be able to ask questions and talk through their microphone, or even type it in. It's going to be less the interactive, we did the interactive, we got the data that we want, but we're really going to be focused on that interactivity, where we're going to listen and let the community talk about these sites that we have identified.
Great.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan made the comment about, it's really more of a graphic or computer graphics, the, through the visioning, using 3D, is, and I know the firm that we're using, the communication firm, really has some sophisticated interactive technology. Are they going to be applying some of this future-type thinking, but using the city of Newport Beach and the landmass of city of Newport Beach, and helping us think through some creative ideas to, I mean, if, Ms. Brenner brought up the West Newport industrial area, and we've talked about that, and I think there's, I think it's a great idea to envision that as a new-to-Newport Beach concept of live, work, play, and how is that type of future-type thinking being incorporated in our thought process going forward? Instead of, in addition, not instead of, in addition to looking at, when I participated or just observed one of the last meetings, and so there are different kinds of housing structures stacked, and this type, and the other thing, but really getting into the interplay of specific land parcels in Newport Beach and neighborhood parcels that could be envisioned in a, in a unique way to Newport Beach. Anyway, does this firm have that capability? Anyway, does this firm have that capability to bring that software capability into the discussion?
So, so I think those are great ideas and a great way to approach, you know, this issue with housing. So as far as, do they have the technology? You know, they'll have to sub it out to--
Sure, well, they could obtain it somehow.
They could obtain it. I think what's really important for everybody to understand is that we are struggling with identifying housing sites. You know, that is the key crux of it. If, if I look at it as that if I had a lot of options on how I could put housing in, I think it'll be a great approach to start focusing on that 3D rendering and that visual fly-in. I can't even get to that because we're still working on, you know, do we have enough sites? And as the mayor, you know, made comments earlier that, you know, this is harder than it looks. So, and the other thing too is that we just, I don't have a ton of time to put all these renderings together. What I'm focusing on, let's identify the sites, let's identify the policies, let's do the EIR, and let's get this done by October 2021. Nobody can build these units. Even if the housing element has been updated, we still have to update the land use element. And that's where we can do a lot of that visual simulation, that 3D rendering, that master planning that everybody's looking for.
Well, I guess we'll just, I mean, 70 people participating, to me, that sounds like a good number. And maybe it will continue to drive an additional new interest. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further, we appreciate this. We'll continue, obviously, to be monitoring this and having longer and more robust conversations as we move forward. So thank you. All right, with that, we will move into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So we'll start in the community room.
Good evening again. Hi, yeah. So this comment is sort of related to the last one. First, I really want to say thanks to staff for, particularly the staff that gets involved with the General Plan Update Committee and other housing committee. It is really a lot of work. Then, taking that from a tangent, they were smart, had subbed the circulation element to a different entity, the Planning Commission. So now I feel like I sort of, I'm sort of entitled to make a similar suggestion. I think we could use the resources more effectively since there will be more new committees and some of the current committee probably will go through some kind of reform or improvement or leadership change, things like that. I have been here for almost four years, so I want to share a few points on how to run a committee meeting ineffectively. Number one, this is a COVID time. So if we always meet on a Thursday and suddenly this month we're meeting on a Monday, next month we're going to meet on a Tuesday, then you're really playing a trick with committee members and the public to lessen participation. Number two, meeting in person during COVID and not providing the Zoom option as promised, that's another minus. Number three, there is a committee member on a committee has not been coming to meetings since early 2019. And another committee member comes to about a third of the meetings. And so their absence comes towards no quorum. And even if there's a quorum, most of the time, there's no agenda package. So you have to read through all this stuff at the desk at the meeting. So if you can't make a decision, then there's always the next meeting. So these are the things we shouldn't be doing, which means there's a room for improvement for the, how the city operates, the committees. That's my two cents. I've been repeatedly told I need to be patient. So I finally lost my patience. I'm venting now, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. During my involvement in the city, and especially during my campaign, I've had many occasions to interact with staff. Regarding the dismissal of our finance director, while I realize that this is a personnel issue and it cannot be discussed openly in public, it has come to my attention recently that there may be more than one staff person to be concerned about. Several members have made statements in my presence alluding to difficult work environment. The recent dismissal of our finance director, a 29-year employee, Dan Matsuchevich, I'm sure I got that wrong, is a wake-up call to the residents that something is amiss at City Hall. We are reminded of the way Dave Kiff was treated when some members of the council wanted him replaced several years ago. I urge you to open an investigation into the, into what has transpired here so that the balance of the staff can believe in your desire to do the right thing for them and for the community. Additionally, I ask you to continue negotiations with Dan M. until such time as you've determined what is going on within the city management. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, anybody have any calls? All right. Without a closed session, we're going to stand at recess until 6 o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you.